For the pledge of silent meditation.
Mr. Keys? Moment of silence. Dear Heavenly Father, we come before you today, first of all grateful that you have assembled this council on this day. We ask that you weigh in with your spirit that we make good and prudent decisions on behalf of the citizens of Erie. And we just ask to be with those who are less fortunate than those who are in mourning, that you comfort them. This we pray in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the minutes from Wednesday, October 20th, 2021, and bills for payment on November 5th and November 12th. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Schuff, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brzinski. We have a presentation from Mayor Schember.
Thank you. Very happy to be with you today. I'm going to present the city's five-year budget, and you have a copy of it in front of you. But before I tell you anything positive in the budget or negative as well, I want to remind you of the three general principles that control everything that my team and I do. First is our six-word mission statement: Build opportunity, restore hope, transform Erie. Second is our two-sentence vision, that Erie is a community of choice, and we celebrate our rich cultural diversity, our welcoming vibrant neighborhoods, our world-class downtown and bayfront, our excellent education for everyone, and our abundance of good family-sustaining jobs. Third are four principles that control everything that I do as mayor. I'm committed to being open, honest, transparent, and accessible. Please hold me accountable to live those four principles. Next, let's take a look at the three major financial problems that our financial consultants, PFM, identified for us about three years ago. The first problem was the unrealistic assumed pension interest rate of return in the city's pension plans. You solved that by reducing the assumed rate of return in the city pensions for this year, 2021, in that budget, from 8% to 6%. You also updated the mortality table from 1983 to the most recent table, which was 2014. Over the previous six years, the city's pension costs rose at an average rate of $1.65 million per year, and the costs doubled over those six years. In 2021, our general fund pensions costs were virtually flat, just under $30,000. They went up $29,688. You'll see much better news than we expected here in the 2022 budget. On line 417 on page 68, you can note that the city's required pension contribution is now down over $2 million here in 2022 from what it was last year. Again, that's page 68, line item 417. The city's second major financial problem was our annual structural deficit. Operating expenses were growing at 10 times the rate of operating revenue. This is a problem that could only be fixed over time. We made very good progress. We did it first by reducing non-union salary increases about two years ago. So over the next four years, it started two years ago, their increases are 0, 1, 1.5, and 2, as opposed to the 3% that have been given forever. We then negotiated with the firefighters and reduced their annual increase to follow the exact same four-year schedule, 0, 1, 1.5, 2. Police salary increases were also decreased. They also reduced salary costs in other ways, including making new hires wait six years now to get to full salary instead of three years. So we doubled the amount of time it takes for new hires to get to full salary. We are continuing the process this year and next year as we negotiate with the other two unions and look for ways to reduce operating expenses and increase operating income. Last year's budget, with last year's budget, you solved the city's third major financial problem, the huge amount of debt that we can't afford to pay without very significant tax increases. You'll recall that we received $99.2 million from the Water Authority to prepay their lease through 2060. Here's how we used that money. You approved moving $2.5 million of these funds to the general fund savings account so that we did not have to do a tax lien sale, as was planned for last year. And that saved the city over a quarter of a million dollars. You approved moving $15 million to cover general fund deficits for the next five years or more. The good news here is that it does look like these funds will last longer than five years and reduce the need for tax increases. I'll talk more about that in a minute. You approved moving $2 million to the business loan fund that Chris Groener manages. These funds will be used to generate more revenue by increasing business development in Erie. Those funds are used in two ways. About $1.5 million is going to be used as a loan fund for business project developments in the city, and a half million is going to be used actually for grants to businesses to encourage more business development here in the city. That left $79.7 million that we had received from the Water Authority, and you approved using that to pay down more than half of the city's outstanding debt. After we did that, after we learned that we could not invest these funds except at very low interest rates, it was much better to just pay down the debt. Here now are eight points related to the major news in this year's budget proposal that's before you. First, if you look at the five-year budget forecast, you'll see that we project no increase in real estate or income tax for the next three years. So 2022, 2023, 2024, we expect, based on very conservative assumptions, there'll be no tax increases. That's in real estate or income tax. And our 2025 budget deficit is down $4.5 million from what it was last year. We're helping to get that down to zero in the future. Second, we have done over $91 million in Lurda new construction, as I think you're all aware. And that will generate over $1 million in additional revenue once the 10-year deferral ends. I believe that Lurda will take off again once COVID-19 is under control, and it's really too bad that we're having such a bad experience with it right now, with COVID. Third, you'll note salaries are up about $3 million from a year ago, but $2.6 million of that $3 million will be reimbursed by ARP funding. It's all ARP-related expenses. So our salaries are only net up $400,000 from last year, which is 1%. So we've kept salary increases to 1% for next year. Fourth, as I mentioned earlier, our pension costs are down over $2 million from last year what they were, and I believe you will see further decline, significant declines, in the years ahead when I'm back presenting more budgets to you in a year, two years, three years, and so forth. Fifth, we did have a slight increase in services and supplies. That's on the city's expense side, as well as an increase in insurance that we're somewhat concerned about, and we are currently working on that, and Paul could talk more about that if you have questions on it. Sixth, and this is the final comment on the general budget. As I mentioned earlier, our five-year projection is much better than it was last year, and I really believe it's going to continue to improve based on our approach in the years ahead. The seventh point is with relation to the sewer fund. We are proposing the first rate increase in the sewer fund in four years. It is important you approve this because we have very little cash in the bank for any emergencies that come up related to sewers. That increase is 6.5% and will cost the average homeowner about $3.30 per quarter or every three months. Then again, that's a 6.5% increase, but it's been four years since we had an increase. So it's really, on average, less than 1% a year. Finally, number eight, with regard to the refuse fund. We're proposing a second increase over the last eight years in the refuse fund as well. There was one increase in 2020. Our 2022 proposal is only the second increase since 2014. The increase is needed this year because our tipping fees went up 150% when we dumped garbage. It went from $50 a ton to $125 per ton. Also, in order to have enough staff, we had to raise part-time salaries 50%, and many people that collect garbage are part-time. That went from $10 to $15 an hour because that's the only way we could get enough people to collect the garbage. So that increase will cost the property owners about $4.75 every three months, and that's a 7.3% increase. As you know, we're also proposing a new stormwater fee this year. The need for this was made clear when we had $1.2 million in repair costs. That was just a couple months ago when our stormwater system on the Lower East Side literally collapsed, put like a 50-foot hole there. The system is over 100 years old and has a very little service over time. We're planning, with your approval, to use another $10.5 million of the ARP funds to prevent a collapse like that from happening again in the inner city. All that money will be spent in the inner city, and that will protect us in the short term. If we can better maintain the stormwater system, we can save millions of dollars in repair costs for collapse like what happened a couple months ago at Frontier Lumber there on East 5th. We're lucky, only one family was temporarily displaced from their home because of that. That could have been a lot worse. People could have been hurt badly. We want to prevent that from happening again. I hope you've read the two-page stormwater management document that my team created. That is in the back of your book as well. I stuck one in there for you. For homeowners, the fee is going to range from $1 per month to $3 per month, depending on the size of what's called their impervious area. An impervious area is anywhere water cannot be absorbed into the ground, but instead runs off into the system. So the 2022 to 2026 budget projects a much better financial future for Erie. Here's a good example of how, with all of your help, we are making progress with the city's finances over the last four years. The first budget that we presented to you in 2018, our projected 2024 budget deficit was $23.2 million. So that was 2018. In the second budget we presented to you in 2019, the next year, that 2024 projected deficit had dropped to $9.5 million. So we brought it down from $23.2 to $9.5 million. That was largely due to the changes that you approved in the pension rate of return assumptions. Last year, that 2024 budget was down another $1.1 million. The deficit was down to $8.4 million. And if you look at this year's 2024 projected budget deficit, it is now zero. That gave us three years where we're very confident there's going to be no need for real estate or income tax increase. There's always work to do on this, but we're making very good progress, and with your help, we'll continue in a very positive direction. We look forward to working with you on this 2022-2026 budget and meeting with you as much as necessary to answer your questions and also hear any suggestions that you have. I know you're hearing and seeing all this for the first time today, but if you have any initial questions, Paul and I will be happy to respond to them now. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Folks, by the way, thank you. I saw you yesterday. You kicked the heck out of nobody, but you won. Ms. Allen kicked everybody's butt.
I have a question. We know that the PFM report, really good progress in following through on these recommendations, including, you know, I have liked to point out that the stormwater fee was included in their recommendations. I think that there are still additional recommendations in here. Now, maybe some of them might have changed because of COVID. I think that, it was my understanding that the city is going to apply or maybe has already received step two of this, which would focus, have you? Okay, maybe if you could just talk about that a little bit, because this is... Okay, maybe if you could just talk about that a little bit because this has kind of become my, like, bible on understanding finances, you know, and keeping in mind that, you know, this was done pre-COVID, but I know that the city has plans to continue to follow this and to see what's next, and I think maybe, like, upgrading information technology might be part of it, and I think that that, the goal would be, part of, one of the goals would be to, like, increase efficiencies, so maybe if you could just talk a little bit about where that's at, Paul?
Yeah, as far as the book goes, Liz, we look at the book constantly to see what recommendations were made, talk to department heads to see what can be done in moving forward. You brought up information technology. We in the finance department, within the next couple of months, are upgrading the finance software so that we can, you know, serve the administration better. You'll be able to get better reports. I know that the planning department, along with what used to be called the code enforcement department, is looking at upgrading, and Kathy Reisik talked about her department there. They've looked at upgrading their software, and they're in the process of choosing somebody. So a lot of the things that you see in that book are looked at constantly.
And I just had one other comment. It looks like if I did these calculations right, so three thirty per quarter for the sewer fund. What was the one for the garbage fee was?
Four seventy-five.
Four seventy-five per quarter. So if you add those together and then you start with the stormwater fee for the residential of twelve, twenty-four, and thirty-six, it looks like residents might be paying forty-four dollars, fifty-six dollars, or sixty-eight dollars a year more in fees. Does that sound right to you? I mean, and that's compared to, like, not having an increase in the property taxes if I did that right. And I also think, you know, that tipping fees, that's kind of startling. Is there anything we can do to reduce that? I know that, you know, we're trying to figure out recycling and everything, but man.
We bid that out every three years, and that recycling, for some reason, just as the mayor mentioned, went from fifty dollars a ton to a hundred twenty-five dollars a ton. And we, you know, we were proactive in bidding that out. It wasn't just, we didn't wait for Waste Management to come back and give us a bid. We called polls, we called, actually called Waste Management up in Jamestown, New York, trying to find somebody that was going to provide the service to us at what, you know, used to be a reasonable rate, but now it's, but that's what everybody's paying. So there's not, you know, short of us putting together our own recycling program and factory. So, but to answer your first question, yes. The math of what you said is correct, but as we go through the budget and go through those different departments, all of those increases in fees are due to increases in costs that we're paying. You're going to see, the purchasing department just opened up four different contracts for the wastewater treatment plant yesterday, and I'm going to say polymer ferrochloride, and I, don't quote me on the other two, but each one of those was an increase over what had been in the past. So unfortunately, with those different contracts, every three years when those come due, those companies want to get paid more, and as we bid those things out, you know, we have to pay what the market rate is.
And I know we have at least one newly-elected city council person in the audience, so do we, when will we be making our plan on, you know, the study sessions for the budget? Are we going to do that afterwards?
I was planning, we're going to have a finance committee meeting today. I mean, I had Christine send out the monthly report. I was going to talk about that for a little bit and then give you an update on where we were at with preparing the budget handouts for you as a group, and then try to put together a schedule as to when you want to sit down and start.
Okay.
So ten-thirty, eleven o'clock.
I just thought it'd be good to let people know that it really, it starts here, it doesn't end here today.
Correct, yeah.
This is the beginning.
A week last year, I think we had six or seven meetings. Normally, three, four, five, six, seven meetings, and any questions? And again, I was going to ask at finance committee meeting if there's anything you want us to prepare handout-wise by the end of the week or so. We'll, you know, I'm sure everybody has ideas.
Thank you.
I know that book's a hundred pages long, and there's a lot of information in it, but if there's something else you want, we'll be glad to do it.
Thank you.
I took the mic away.
Sorry.
One other thing I'd just like to mention, and we'll certainly take any other questions as well, but I also put three additional documents in the back of your book just so you'd have them handy. They refer, it shows you the sewer rates going back to 2004 and the refuse rates going back to 2001 and what the increases were, so you kind of have that perspective. And as far as the new stormwater fee, we also gave you this document which shows in communities, mainly in Western Pennsylvania, what they charge for it. Like, this isn't necessarily a new idea of ours, so I just wanted to pass that along. Does anybody have any other questions at this point? I think we probably need to get a hearing going. You okay?
A lot of questions. The biggest thing is, and I promise folks on a fixed income, this is just another tax, boss, you know what I mean? If you want to raise taxes, let them pay it once a year. You're hitting these people up on a fixed income, you hit them up every quarter. I didn't add them all together, but what, fifty, sixty bucks a month?
No, no, no. Not fifty, it was forty-four dollars a year, fifty-six dollars a year, sixty-eight dollars a year, adding them all together.
I'm just asking to find some money in the budget that you can cut so that folks can at least have one year breather on this stuff. I understand where you're coming from. I collected garbage because of college, so I know what the whole thing's all about. But I can't, in conscience, there's got to be some money that we can pull back from ARP for the money that we lost with the Civic Center closed, the Warrant, you know, all these places that could not generate revenue.
That's on your agenda today, I believe, right?
Yeah, we have to.
Four million of it, I believe.
And the stormwater thing, we need a couple features on that. One of them, how about a sunshine law? Let it go for five years and see how it's working, and then the next council can renew it.
Well, and actually, what you're voting on related to that is for five years. So that would have to be.
Your five-year plan.
Yes.
And the other thing is, I need a better accounting of where that money is going. If it's one point seven million, I think we were, unless I misunderstood and told it, I thought he told us that Public Works would get a million a year out of that fund, and seven hundred thousand plus would go into our special stormwater fund.
Little flip-flop there. About seven hundred, about seven hundred thousand dollars of that, it's actually in your budget book. We've put together a budget for that, but there's going to be about a million dollars a year that's going to go into a fund balance or a four-project amount. So there's, we're going to hire a couple of new people, an MS four coordinator and a field supervisor. They're going to have some benefits that go along with that, and there's going to be, you know, the everyday expenses along with running a department, but the rest of the money will go into a fund so that when a special project or a special need come up, that money will be available.
That will be a line item situation, right?
Yeah, that's the same thing Michael's pointing out to you on this page.
All right, I got that. I just. Yeah, we'll discuss it, brother. Just letting you know where I'm coming from, you know. I cannot do this to the folks on a fixed income. I really can't.
One thing I'd comment about that is Social Security's going up about six percent next year.
Yeah, and probably Medicare's going to go up seven.
I don't know about that.
I don't know either.
You can make anything up you want.
Just ask Mike, so it doesn't bother me. But I'm talking about the folks who, all through everything that's been going on, they have found a way to pay all their taxes, to pay all their fees now. Now we're going to slap them with some more when they're hurting. I just read an article the other day about this one dollar increase in our gas, gasoline prices. Countrywide, that ends up with a thirty-four billion dollar change of funds that we call discretionary funds. People are not going to go on vacation, they're not going to do this, they're going to cut down on Christmas presents, all these things because they have to put gas in a car to go to work. Now, we're lucky because we can go to two states in twenty minutes either way, but a lot of folks are in a car for forty-five minutes each way to work around the country. And thirty-four billion dollars, that blew me away when I saw that. So there's, really, there's a whole lot of people hurting here. And the people that are probably hurting the most are not the ones in the poor, poor areas because they can get help. It's the proud people who have made it happen every month. Somehow they, maybe they cut out going out to dinner once a week or once every other week to make up for this fee or that fee. They've been carrying us on their shoulders all these days. So I'm only one vote, but I am one vote, and I understand from a standpoint of economics here with our CPA and everybody, that it's always good to have more funds. But if we're going to have almost, what, seven hundred thousand at the stormwater, take a little bit out of that and pay those increases for one year, and then revisit it next year. I'll still be here, I think, if we're willing, I always struck by lightning. I just, I'm sorry, I digress.
That's why we'll have some budget sessions and we'll try to dissect this a little.
I thank you for a good report, though, boss. And that's the reason that we put everything on hold till we found out what we're looking at. I still go on record as saying there's got to be some more funding from the savings last year to make sure the folks don't get hit again this year. So like that. You have anything else? Anybody? No questions? Mr. Keys?
Just one thing, I know we have a public hearing, but I was just saying that I believe that payment to essential workers is one of the things that can be, that is refundable under the ARP, so if you haven't looked at that.
Yeah, we haven't really given any increases that we could recapture, so. All they've got is their normal pay.
Thank you. I guess we are moving right along. Thank you, sir. Ms. Watson? Moving right along, what are we doing next?
We're going to jump to the public hearing.
Okay.
We have a request from Repax LLC for the construction of a two-unit dwelling located at 257 East Second Street, parcel ID 1009209. I believe we have the developer here.
Speaking for it?
Speaking for it, I'm not the developer. My name is Jeremy Blazer. I'm with the Bayfront East Side Task Force, office at 420 Parade Street. I am speaking on positive for this approval. Repax has reached out to us and explained what they propose for this property. In the last ten years that I've been at Best, there's only been three agencies that have developed brand-new housing in our neighborhood. Best has built brand-new homes, twenty-two of them in our neighborhood. Erie Insurance has developed brand-new housing at Fifth and German, and Hafteffer Humanity has built multiple single-family homes in our neighborhood. So we would encourage, and we are positive about. Sure.
Mr. Keys, you brought an idea up. Are we, we need a developer to come in first, right?
Is the developer available? The person on record who's having the public hearing, did you have?
No problem. Hold my public comments.
You'll be speaking for it or against it after we get the nuts and bolts.
Got it.
Okay.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Is there, is there anything that goes up on multimedia or not?
Frank?
Do you need an easel? Probably need a mic.
Oh, my name is Don Greshaw. I'm actually, I am from Technical Graphics. Repax has hired me to do the design of the building right now, 257 and 263 East Second. Are you guys familiar with this area or at all? There is a blighted piece of property. There's a building on there that we boarded up. We could get a lot of vandalism in there. It's an eyesore. So Repax reached out to me. What we want to do, and we've already started it, as you can see right there, we have taken these two pieces of property and we are going to combine them, which has probably already been done by now. So, and then we reached out to zoning, we got our dimensional variance, and then we did the plans. As, we're putting a duplex on here with a garage that splits it. And if I can show you this, this is what's going to be there when we're all done. Can you see that? So basically, what we're going to have is a double-sided duplex. This will be one unit, a garage, another garage for this unit, and then this will be one unit. And basically, what we're doing is we're modeling it after the older buildings of Erie. We want it to look like it's been here forever. I'm trying to what? No, I'm sorry. Basically, what we're trying to do is, we're trying to. Okay, basically, what we're doing is we're taking, and we want to take an older design of the building. There's one actually over on German that Erie Insurance has done, is the yellow one. I don't know if you guys are familiar with it, but we kind of modeled it over with that a little bit, and we're doing the old crown on the outside. We're making this, we want it to really look good when it's done. We want it to be a gem in that area. So, and my client has signified that they're willing to put money into that area, and, you know, we don't want this to be just a, your run-of-the-mill rental property where it just becomes blighted. We're trying to make this something that will be sought out. You guys have any questions?
Yes, who's your client, please?
Repax. And Repax actually has another business liberty tool that's right next to it. Yes, the owner.
This can be a short-term rental?
No, this is going to be long-term. We're hoping to get, you know, people that are moving in for Erie Insurance or the hospitals or, you know, in that area.
So people will purchase, it's like a condo?
No, it's a rental property. They could stay there, the minimum will be a year that they have to stay there.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Okay, they are a rental property. You say it's long-term. What's your definition of long-term?
Minimum a year, and then max however long they want to. Uh, minimum a year and then max however long they wanted to stay. And we've already gone through waterfront planning, you know, everything's been done. You guys are actually the, the last part before we apply for building permits. Any questions?
I have a com- oh, go ahead, Michael.
Oh, I see.
Oh, um, just had a comment and a question. I appreciate the design. Yes, I'm an architect, so I kind of appreciate what you're saying about the, looking at the older buildings and being contextual. So thank you for that. Do you have other, um, I guess you can't make this, as I said, do you have other developments planning? Or, uh, I guess we should wait to see if that comes to fruition.
Yeah, we're, we're waiting for this to come to fruition. Uh, us and Repax don't have any other projects together in the city of Erie. I actually have another one that's coming up for the city of Erie that is just starting to go through.
Okay, thank you.
What kind of price range you gonna have for the rental?
Um, we actually have not discussed that, but I'm assuming it's gonna be between twelve, twelve-hundred and fifteen-hundred dollar range for each one of them.
So you'll be competing with a hundred and twenty-two residential units that Mr. Persinger's doing, right?
That's possible. Uh, each one is roughly about twelve-hundred square feet. And they're two bedrooms, two baths. I, I can actually show you the plan views if you wanna see them.
Oh, yeah, you finished your presentation.
Okay, so this will be the first floor. So then each one's the same. There's a landing here, so you can come in. You have stairs going upstairs. You have a living room, a diner, a kitchen. And then you have your, uh, utility room, laundry room, uh, benches and cubbies coming from the garage. And then you have a hackout here. Did I see that? Yep. Okay, and then, once you go upstairs, again, it's all the same, it's here. So you come up the stairs, you have a math bath, you have math deposit. And then you come over here and then there's a shared bathroom and a bedroom. Any questions?
You don't have to deal with handicap accessible or anything, right?
I'm sorry, what?
Handicap accessibility?
Uh, no, we're not, no, we're not, we're not anything.
I, I have a question. You said you're not gonna go, I'm gonna see if you have an answer or not. Whether it's relevant. So, um, I just happened to look at the deed transfers and I saw that, uh, there was no cost paid for the properties. And I'd like to know, uh, from whom we may have gotten, uh, properties at zero cost?
Okay, um, the, the Repax is, uh, the person that owns Liberty Iron, or I'm sorry, Liberty Tool, started Repax to do the rental property. He owned the properties, those two properties prior. He just transferred them over to Repax and then he like... So they're obvious properties. They bought the blighted house, which, I don't know if you guys have that picture, but that, that property, he bought that roughly about a year and a half ago. And then, and then he transferred that.
Any other questions, folks?
Yes, does this project, uh, fit into our LERTA program?
Uh, we have actually not gone towards LERTA. And, you know, we're, we're throwing this out of funds that are readily available. Uh, you know, again, I don't wanna say that they might not go to LERTA for tax purposes.
You gave me the idea, though.
Do you, uh, do you have any numbers that you might know what, uh, tax dollars that property may bring into the city or?
Um, right now, uh, the cost is what, what we're assuming the cost can be about four-hundred fifty thousand. And so how it's assessed after that, we have no idea.
You have the mic?
Your mic again?
Your mic? Oh, sorry. Okay, um, we, we know that the cost of doing the project is roughly about four-hundred fifty thousand. And we don't know what the assessment would be after that. That would be up to, you know, the city.
I believe it'd be pretty doggone close to what it makes. That's an easy assessment on that one, I think, on the city's part, but, uh, very good. Thank you.
It's nice to see something on the east side of State Street. Any others? Liz, any questions? Kathy? I guess, I guess we can let you go.
Okay.
No, no blood loss. Thank you.
See, that would be great. Mr. Blazer, if you wanna call for and against?
Thanks.
All right, our next step in the process here is, uh, folks who are for the project come forward to speak. And after we have those people, then we'll have, if there are any against, the folks who are against. Okay, and sorry we stopped you the first time.
That's okay, that's okay. I'll, uh, I won't reiterate all my comments earlier. I'll just, uh, talk about a couple, uh, the first being that you're correct, there's not a lot of new development on the east side. Uh, so as I was saying, Best has created twenty-two new homes in the neighborhood. Erie Insurance, as he's mentioning, had created brand-new housing at Fifth and German. And Hapthat Humanity has built some single-family homes. But that's really the only new construction in that entire area in the last ten years, uh, other than what Hands has done further outside of the neighborhood I represent. Uh, so we do encourage you to recommend Repax for approval on this zoning, uh, hearing. Uh, we are very excited about new construction. Uh, as Mr. Brennan said, new construction that matches the old construction of the neighborhood. Uh, so it's a nice, uh, entity. And as you were just wrapping up your discussion of the budget with the mayor, uh, the current assessment on those properties is twenty-five thousand. So twenty-five thousand in a blighted, ugly vacant house for the last eight years. Uh, so we encourage anybody that's going to develop. Uh, and also, uh, Mr. Greshaw has reached out to us. I've talked to many of the owners in the area about what is being developed. There's lots of questions when, you know, they see the signs go up, what are people, you know, proposing for our neighborhood? But nobody has been opposed to it. They've been very pleased to hear what the plan is. Uh, everybody that's reached out to me, I, I can communicate, has been positive for it. And I think we need to figure out a way to, to not rubber stamp these. These need to go through the proper channels and proper approvals, but we want more of this to happen, not less. So we need to figure out ways to encourage companies like Repax and, and, uh, developers like Mr. Greshaw to do this more throughout the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else to speak for the project? Anybody else to speak for the project? And the third time, anybody else to speak for it?
We have someone, um, on the line that I don't know if they're for or against.
Frank, can you find out if they are pro or con here?
It's Freda.
She might be both.
Freda is against. Okay.
She's against, all right. Okay, so positives are done. Anybody to speak against it? Anybody to speak against it? Okay, let's put Fred on. Fred, are you there?
I withdrew my request to speak.
You changed your mind? Okay. That's good. Thank you. Uh, that being said, Mr. Bessa, we're done, right?
We are done.
Okay. Thank you for your time, folks. See you later. Moving right along, Ms. Watson?
Uh, request for repository sales. Um, I thought we were gonna have a, a Mr. Luther speak. You could come up to the mic, state your name and address. There's some questions on the dais. If you could make sure you answer those questions.
Okay, uh, my name's Elijah Luther. My address is eighteen-twenty-two West A Street in Erie. I wanna buy the property on West Nineteenth Street. There's no, uh, like number address. The way it's described online is just West Nineteenth Street and North Side.
It's the four-hundred block?
Say what?
It's four-hundred block?
Yeah, yeah, it's like, the address next door is four-eighteen, so it's on the north side of West Nineteenth Street, between Chestnut and Walnut. The property's vacant. It doesn't have any structures on it, except for a chain-link fence. It's like this tall, all overgrown. My plans or intentions for the property, I'd like to put like a garden on it, like, uh, the Sisters of St. Joseph in that neighborhood. They've got one right next door. It's like a big orchard. There's like thirty fruit trees on it. And then two doors to the west, they've got this thing called Three Sisters Park. If y'all have ever seen that, it's like, uh, you know, just like a nice green space, I guess. So I'll do something like that with them, maybe. I used to volunteer with them a lot when I was a teenager. They got one on Nineteenth and Myrtle as well, and eighteen, the Chestnut. So it's just, uh, what condition is the property in? It's all overgrown. You know, just like a big lot, like a field, uh, not mowed recently, it looks like. Obviously, it's on a repository list, I guess. Uh, do I live near the property? Maybe like two and a half miles, eighteen-hundred block of West A Street, maybe three miles. Uh, how will I provide for the maintenance of the property, such responsibilities for mowing, snow removal, et cetera? Well, there's no board or ceiling of open windows and doors. Um, in terms of mowing or snow removal, I mean, sidewalk's like forty feet long. I can handle that.
Do I understand that you're basically talking urban farming on that property?
Um, essentially, yeah. I mean, you've seen what they got going on up there, right, in Little Italy?
Right.
So, yeah, something like that, um, you know.
Well, we'll be watching you, so we're looking forward to it.
Okay, cool. Next one?
Thank you.
Does anybody else have questions?
I just wondered, could you, I, I'm really familiar with the volunteers, volunteer work that the teenagers do up there. So could you tell us a little bit about that? And then would you just be gardening for yourself? I mean, do you need like gardening space because of where you live now or?
No, no.
You have an attachment to the neighborhood or?
No, there's like, I mean, I got spaces to garden. And like I said, uh, I used to spend a lot of time volunteering with them. The way that they do it is like you say, so they've got these four or five different gardens. And then when me and my brother, I was a, I got a twin brother, when we was like fifteen or something, we tried to go and get hired there because they were, you know, they pay teenagers to work in the gardens. And they're like, oh, y'all live too far away. And we're like, okay, well, we'll just volunteer then. And then they couldn't hire anybody, so they did pay us when we were like sixteen, seventeen. So we did that for a couple of years. And basically they have kids from the neighborhood, like, come work in the gardens for like whatever is legally allowed for a teenager. You know, like sixteen or twenty hours a week or something. And it was more than minimum wage, you know what I mean? And you learned a lot. And then they sell all the produce at the farmer's market. It used to be at St. Paul's on Sixteenth and Walnut, but now they do it on Eighteenth between Myrtle and Chestnut, on the south side of the street. And then there's this program, I can't remember what it's called, but basically, like, uh, I don't know if the Sisters of St. Joseph are responsible for it or what, but if you get like EBT, your food stamps, you can go to the farmer's market and like swipe your card. Say you swipe twenty dollars, then they'll double your buying power. So then you can buy forty dollars' worth of stuff at the farmer's market. And then the kids from the gardens sell the stuff in the farmer's market. So, you know, I'd like to get, just, uh, basically try to get involved with them and do something with this property, with them over there.
Okay, and so you, you might be, end up selling your produce at the farmer's market too, or have you not? Is that not a long-range plan yet?
I mean, I'm not trying to make any money from it, you know, like maybe the kids would sell it or something. Um, I just thought it would be cool to see it like, not an overgrown lot right next to all this other nice stuff.
Yeah, you're right. I mean, that orchard is amazing in the Three Sisters Park, so thank you for telling us that. I appreciate that.
All right, cool. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Any other requests for repository sales?
Sir?
Any other requests for repository sales? Okay, we could go to public comments.
Name and address, sir?
Uh, good morning. Richard Wagner, forty-two twenty-eighth State Street, Erie. Congratulations to everyone that won, uh, their election yesterday. And for the ones that are moving on, we'll miss you and your knowledge and what you bring to the, to the game. So, uh, good luck in your new endeavors and, uh, personal or, or otherwise. So, saying that, I'm here to talk about Hagan Way. I purposely go over Sixth Street to look at what that man's doing down there. I was lucky enough to own a Jureki mansion for nineteen years at two-thirty West Ninth. And I know the work, the money, the effort it takes to maintain a building like that. And when I watch what that man's doing restoring them back to their probably better-than-original condition, he deserves an attaboy. And naming a street after him, uh, is the least we can do. And I know he's not in it for the money. There's no return on investment on what he's doing. He's doing it because he loves Erie. He cares about Erie. He cares about downtown. And I think I heard that he actually grew up down in that neighborhood when he was a young child. And personally, my grandmother lived at Seventh and Chestnut. I spent a lot of time at Seventh and Chestnut. I spent a lot of time at Watsi Cursey Mansion to get out of the house. So when I look at what, what's happened, it's so nice, you know? God bless the guy. Uh, that being said, the Roger Young Park. I grew up there, but it wasn't a park. It was a project. It was gray barracks-like buildings on stilts. The men that came back from World War II needed a place to live, raise their families. They went to Roger Young Project. I went to Burton School, so I'm familiar with it. I understand it. And I understand what it was like when I was a child, playing in the fields and enjoying it. And everybody there probably came from the same set of circumstances, pretty much. They were veterans. And Roger Young Park, I'm not against Roger Young Park. Those gray buildings have long been demolished. And it's a grassy piece of property with a swim and pool on it. But I'm here today because there's a whole bunch of seventy-year-olds that got their start at Roger Young Project. And I don't want that fact to get wasted. Just some recognition, Mr. Keys, that at one time, before it was a park, it was a place where we stuck our soldiers so they could get a start in it. And just somehow recognize that, you know, I, 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 I don't, I'm, I'm not here to talk about anything other than that. Just some recognition to, to how it got its start and, and, and those gray stilted buildings. I, I kinda remember, you know, I do. Not kind of, I do remember. So i- if, if somehow, uh, on a placard or, or something, just, just inject something for the, for the community, the, the seventy-year-olds. Because, you know, that's what my sister and I are, and we grew up there. And, uh, let people recognize what that was before it was a park. Because you can turn it into something nice, you know? Couple million dollars should be real nice, but that's, that's neither here nor there. But, uh, that's all I had to say and, uh...
Sir, if you would, uh, why don't you write up a little narrative about that? And if a plaque or something would be something that the historical society would want? At least we'll have a template, so it's good.
Yeah, and I, and you know, uh, uh, I actually rode by the Burton School. I was over there the other day and, and I rode by there and, uh...
It's for sale, you know?
Yeah, I mean, that's where I bought savings bonds. We used to have, uh, fire drills or bomb drills and crawl underneath the desk and stuff like that. But that's telling you how old I am, so I won't go there. But, uh, yeah, thank you for your time. And again, Jim, good luck. Kathy, enjoy your retirement. And, uh, Kathy, or, yeah, everybody else, David, we'll miss you.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment, if I could.
Sure.
That, uh, Mr. Roger Young himself was a decorated veteran, that's with whom the park is named after.
Yeah, yeah. And, and, and just a little, I, I look, I, I just a little bit, and, and I think he was in Ohio.
You definitely don't wanna forget any of our history, sir.
Yeah, so, yeah, and, and, and thanks, Michael, you know, and, 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 uh... And...and, uh, good luck with your project. But, you know, don't forget us, old gray-haired people.
Mr. President, I just wonder if the Housing Authority would have information on the history? I'm guessing they would. Um, so just a thought.
Yeah, that's why I mentioned...
Yeah.
Hello.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of council. My name is Anna Franz. I'm the executive director of Our West Bayfront. Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to speak. Actually, I came to speak about the, um, comprehensive plan developed by the Redevelopment Authority. But first, seeing, um, Mr. Brennan's proposal regarding West Sixth Street, I would also like to add my support for...
Leave your address, ma'am.
Oh, I'm sorry. Office address is four oh four West Eighth Street in Erie.
Your...your personal address?
And also, uh, personal address is six six five eight Richardson Road in Fairview. Um, so I'd like to add my support, um, for the renaming of West Sixth Street. No one has done more to transform West Sixth Street than Mr. Hagan. Um, but regarding the housing plan developed by the Redevelopment Authority, um, so just a little bit about Our West Bayfront. Many of you know that we are a nonprofit neighborhood revitalization group that's been working in the West Bayfront neighborhoods of the city of Erie since about two thousand seventeen. Um, the area that we serve is home to about thirteen thousand residents and some of the city's oldest housing stock. One of the areas that we've focused on since two thousand seventeen is helping to connect people with grants and resources to help them make repairs to their properties. We know that the need in this area and throughout the city is tremendous, and the cost of doing nothing is enormous. And I think you've been presented with data from, um, City, the Code Enforcement Office, and planning that speaks to that cost. Uh, just a few points based on our experience working in the West Bayfront neighborhoods over the last five years. Working very closely with the Redevelopment Authority, we've been able to assist just over a hundred properties with repairs thanks to funds and grants that we've been able to secure. That's a tiny sliver of the need that we know exists. Um, we have roughly a hundred and twenty properties that have reached out to us, and I keep track of, um, owners who are seeking assistance, and we haven't yet been able to help them. We frequently refer people over to the Redevelopment Authority. We know that their waiting list is very long. About fifty percent of the properties in the West Bayfront, based on recent code enforcement assessments, are considered poor, unsound, or average, which indicates to me that there are at least some repair needs that are not being addressed. Um, and in the worst-case scenario, you know, those...um, those issues can continue, and ultimately, that leads to vacant properties, blight, and really just a deterioration of the city's tax base. We also know that there's no one way to address all of these issues. You know, we've got different circumstances, different situations with owners, and the properties are...are not, you know, uniform. Um, and it takes a tremendous amount of time to work through these properties. Um, and outreach to property owners is a major piece of this work. So we need as many tools in our toolbox as possible to do all of this work. The plan that was put for...uh, forward by the Redevelopment Authority for the ARP money was very thoughtfully developed. Um, it had a tremendous amount of input from, um, our organization and the other neighborhood groups working through the ENGP. Lots of very thoughtful, um, you know, very specific comments that they heard and...and took into account that really, I think, will help ensure that that funding gets to the property owners that most need it and really will strengthen and improve the city's housing stock for years to come. Um, it's not, you know, it's not enough, probably, for the...the full need of...of what exists in the city, but it's a huge step forward, and it really will dramatically improve the ability of the city to keep people in their homes and keep those homes safe and healthy now into the future. So, um, we hope that City Council will move forward this plan quickly. We need time, again, to build up that pipeline, start working with property owners. Um, the construction season, it's hard to believe, but we'll be here soon in the spring, and we'd really like to get to work as soon as possible. So thank you very much for...for your consideration and for your time this morning.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm back. Jeremy Blazer with the Bayfront East Side Task Force. I live at eighty-four eighty Wattsburg Road, Erie PA one six five zero nine. Uh, I'm also here to discuss the ARP funding, specifically the housing plan that the Redevelopment Authority has proposed. I came today anticipating it being on your agenda and you discussing it and potentially moving it forward. I see that it's been removed. Uh, I would encourage you to revisit that, uh, and to bring that plan forward. It is well-vetted. Uh, it has been discussed. As a member of the Erie Neighborhood Growth Partnership, along with, uh, Ms. Franz, uh, I have been at many meetings. We've discussed this. We've, uh, asked the Erie Redevelopment Authority Board to consider some changes, some edits that they've incorporated, uh, that Mr. Snippert has made sure is, uh, well-thought-out, uh, plan moves forward. Um, I think this will...I know this will provide, uh, new and necessary funding. Fifteen million dollars is a huge infusion over the next few years, uh, but it also is well-spread out. Um, I think that, uh, what I like most about the plan is that it's comprehensive, that addresses all the issues that we have best worked on. It wor...it's going to address blight. It's going to address new housing, creating new opportunities for people to live within the city and the community. It's going to address renovations, helping those homeowners that do need a handout, uh, that do need a little help in repairing their homes. And it's also going to help with job creation. It's going to help, uh, create, uh, opportunities for entrepreneurs to get into this industry, and we need more of that. Uh, as much of this funding is going to be flowing into our community, uh, we need more, uh, well-qualified contractors to construct and do these jobs. Um, so I...I think the time in the lead is now. I would encourage you to place this back on the agenda and to reconsider this at your next meeting. Um, and I thank you for your time.
Good morning. I'm Candace Battles. I live at five oh five West Fourth Street. First, I'd like to say I agree with renaming portions of West Sixth Street in honor of Mr. Hagan, who has done so much work in my community, and how appreciative we are of that. However, I'm also here today because I'm very concerned that there's a plan that the Redevelopment Authority has worked with our community leaders to help homeowners, um, with housing issues. And it has...it was on the agenda and has been removed, which means there will be more time between that plan coming before you. One of the goals of this group, I understand, is to restore hope. Anna and Jeremy have talked to you about, from the point of view of Our West Bayfront in Best. And in all honesty, transparency, I am the chairperson of the Our West Bayfront Board, as well as the West Bayfront Neighborhood Watch. So I have lots of contact with people who live in the community and who have needs in the community. And when we talk about restoring hope for people, let me tell you briefly one story that happened over the past year. I had a, to me, a young mother, when I'm in my seventies. She's a young mother who contacted, uh, me, and she has problem with her home. She has young children. Some of them need special services. She works full-time and is meeting the needs of her family the best she can within the resources that she has available to her. However, a lot...the plumber that we sent out to her house said that walking across her...her kitchen floor was like walking across a sponge because of the water damage from the leaks within the unit. He assessed that and got back to me. I contacted Anna at Our West Bayfront. We were able to come up with some funding to help her stop the immediate problem. The immediate problem. This problem has went on for a while. So, we don't want it to get worse where it's to the point where she and her children don't have a place to live, or it is not helpful, he... not good for their health. This woman is on the waiting list for the Redevelopment Authority to get help. How long will she have to wait if we continue to put off things that need to be looked at at this time? I thank you all for listening to me. Sorry for the loss of words and stutter. Um, but I want you to know that she's not the only one that's out there struggling. I could tell you other personal stories of people in the community. Um, and not just in our community. I know a couple across the city. So I urge you to please look at the Redevelopment Authority plan as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is John Bookner, the director of the Erie Downtown Partnership, one forty East Fifth Street here in Erie PA. My residential address is one one five zero Isles Avenue in Lake City. First off, I would like to start out this morning congratulating Mayor Schember and the administration on a reelection. We, as an organization, look forward to working with you and the team for another four years of restoring hope, transforming Erie, and working to create the world-class downtown of Bayfront. I would like to congratulate Councilwoman Liz Allen in your reelection, as well as Chuck Nelson, Mo Troop, and Jasmine Flores on their election to City Council. Councilwoman Schaff, Councilman Brennan, thank you for your service. It's been a great opportunities working with you to help in our efforts. Congratulations, Councilman Winarsky, taking the next step at the county level. And ultimately, thank you, Mr. Brzezinski, Mr. Witherspoon, and Keys, to your continued support, as well as service to our community. With regard to the opportunities we have to continue to move forward, understandably, we have those challenges, but we have the opportunities with ARP funds and others that we can work collaboratively together so that we can transform our public space. The administration's plans to better our neighborhoods through the parks and utilizing those as assets that will help transform the neighborhood is applauded by us and the administration, to the administration. Your ongoing support of our businesses. Without our business community, we...we need to make sure that we continue to realize we have to have an economy to have a community. And those efforts in utilizing these funds to help our small business owners, those that are our neighbors, those that are vested in this community, and to continue that it's ongoing is, again, applaud. And lastly, with regards to our neighborhoods. Strong neighborhoods, strong downtown. Strong downtown, strong neighborhoods. Your ongoing support of our neighborhoods through the Our West Bayfront, through the Bayfront East Side Task Force, Sisters of St. Joseph's, and other organizations is applauded. Thank you for your help. Thank you for your time. Congratulations.
Good morning.
This is Credit Hepfer, seventeen thirty-eight West Twenty-third Street, Erie, Pennsylvania, one six five zero two. Um, the go... the governor is directing...
I'll be next, sir.
...to verify business receiving and offer assistance, provides workers paid sick leave and pays no less than the minimum wage for state wage, which is thirteen fifty. I suggest the city apply that standard to their security workers, to any entity receiving R A C P funds, to alert recipients, to those receiving opportunity zone benefits and state grants and tax breaks. As to parks, once again, I suggest that we need to have a separate park department that is not part of Public Works, that has participatory planning and development, incorporating neighborhood and community involvement. Um, the...there's still, uh, a failure to clean up after the destruction that the Public Works did involving park. There's still sediment on the trails. A parks commission is a good idea, but community and user access is essential. I think the Roger Young Park project needs more work. As far as the Bayfront Zone planning and process, when I was a...an employee of the Forest Service, we had ways to use GIS and other, um, devices, and this was twenty-five years ago, to look at how a project would overall affect the visual and other, uh, aspects of the community. If you look at the bay, uh, from...uh, from the trail at...by Niagara Pier, and you look up at the new buildings, it's...it's...it's really ugly. And this is not how we want the Bayfront to look. There needs to be a comprehensive look at projects looking for variances from the Bayfront zoning process, not just pluck things down. It looks awful from the Bayfront. I can't imagine what it's like from the neighborhood. Um, we need to have a publicly available spreadsheet of how the ARC funds are being spent in various categories before approving large expenditures. I want the city to assure the addition of accessible pedestrian signals at all signalized intersections along the Eighth Street project. That's on the agenda for today. There's continues to be a failure to have a process which ensures detectable, um, alternative pedestrian access during construction. The Warner Theater, the EDDC, and some projects at Richard Arms are attempting to provide sidewalk bypasses. Longer projects, especially like the church in Pembroke Sash, should provide alternative access. Um, they should not just be allowed to close and detour. And, um, there's still a failure of the curb grant contractor to provide detectable closure and a reasonable alternative access. Closing a street at a controlled crossing and offering access on a busy street with no controlled crossing is unacceptable. With the reopening of a playhouse and soon to open Warner, I urge the city to ensure that marquee lighting and outdoor, outdoor visible large screens do not result in excessive outdoor lighting and lighting with rapid removing or flashing messages. The Marquette Bank has excessive lighting and visually disturbing large video screen that's lit up at night. And really, it's time for the city to try to get the other reader boards, like the one at the Bayfront and the one at the, um, Cathedral Prep Event Center, to...to voluntarily comply with the Reader Board regulations, as well as the Catholic School Reader Board. Stormwater needs to be permanently funded program. Larger withdrawals from ARC funds should be very carefully managed. Money for low-income neighborhoods should be used for social programs, not only for physical buildings and infrastructure. And it really is time for...for Erie to join the rest of the country in having a stormwater fee. I paid a stormwater fee years ago in Washington State. If there is a need to find a way to help low-income property owners pay their property taxes in total, that's something that needs to be looked at. But that's no reason to fail to adopt a stormwater fee at this time. And lastly, please make it easier to find the link to register to participate in these meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, Freda. You always find it, though. That's good. Sir?
Hello, Ron Stemka. I live on thirty-nine twenty-five Marion Street. Next year will be fifty years I've been there, okay? Eddie, you know me? And Jimbo, hey, congratulations. I'm glad you won. I was behind you all the way. All right. Uh, Alan, you did a good job talking. You're bringing up the right issue. And Eddie, you were fantastic. You brought up the issues.
You can't address them directly, sir.
Well, I'm...why not?
Because it's against the rules of council.
Well, this is...I haven't been there in years, okay?
At least you're saying nice things.
I'm saying good things.
Right.
You know I'm going to start up. You know that. And when I start, you guys better hold on. Okay, we got a problem. The whole city's screwed up. All these little taxes, and Eddie brought it up. All these little taxes. Erie's way too high. You got the old...I'm seventy-three years old. I worked at Zern for fifty years. And Zern, you guys probably don't know, they own Zern again. They bought it back from Rexnard. Anybody know about that? Eddie?
No, I don't.
Zern bought it back. It's Zern Industries again, okay? Biggest thing mistakenly about...they sold that boundary. There's only a couple dozen in families in the U.S. And that boundary, one machine would put three thousand moles out a day. Then they put electric furnaces, and that continuously runs. So now, they're buying it overseas in China. And it takes ten... it takes ten to twelve months to get the product. And they're paying a twenty-five percent tariff. That's why they bought it back. They should have kept that boundary here. Now, say you got a thousand pieces, and I got your pattern. I put another machine. How long would it take to do 1,000 pieces in one day? You're putting 3,000 an hour, 308-hour shift. There's three machines. You could do it in a day. Clean them, machine them, whatever has to be done. You've got the product, right? That was a stupid mistake. Okay, let's get on to some big issues here. Which Fort Knox... I call this Fort Knox. You've got the so-called mayor, the mayor, so-called, okay? I asked him on the radio, that bad guy on the radio, he's going to be gone, I get done with him. And so, anyway, I asked him about the $10 million you guys are going to borrow. Hey, you got that money came from the government. How much did he get? I said it was 85. How much... Can somebody tell me how much it was?
79 million.
79 million. Okay. And the mayor said, "We'll pay him 1% interest." Okay, you go borrow 10 million. You're going to pay 3% or 4% on public compounded yearly. So how many years are you going to pay 10 million off? You'd better take that money and put it up front. The money's there to be used. Am I right? Okay? Let's use it instead of the kids paying it. Okay? What's another thing?
I stand corrected. You were talking about the water lease money?
No, I'm talking about the money the federal government gave us.
That's your money, okay. I was right.
Okay. But I'll tell you, what's he doing with that money? Anybody know? Can you tell me?
We're going to find out as the days go by.
Okay. I already gave millions of dollars for... You want him to WACP, what's his name, Horton? You give him a couple million. What's that for? Anybody know? I mean, I'm asking questions. No one knows? You can talk to me if I can ask the question. Eddie, can you call? Can you talk?
So you can communicate with us offline. This isn't a dialogue when you're at the jurors. So you can air your questions or your concerns, and one of us will follow up with you if you leave your contact information.
Well, hey, this is a meeting. I'm talking, and I want some answers. I'm a concerned citizen, okay? Eddie knows who I am, and Jim really knows who I am. And you guys all know about me, okay? You two guys really know. So what are we going to do about these taxes? It's little taxes. I run off... I never heard of a runoff tax. That's bull. It's a backdoor tax. And like Eddie said, it's all these little taxes adding up. And if I'm 75 and I can't afford it, I'm worried about my next meal, or paying my taxes, or whatever. And that's the guy I worry about. I don't worry about it. You know who I am, so I don't have to worry about money, okay? But what are we going to do with these people? Huh? There's going to be all these backdoor taxes. They got all this money. They can use that money, you know? A $10 million? It sounds... I mean, use logic. I messed around with millions of dollars in my house, okay? I know what big money is about, okay? But you guys got... Eddie, you did a good job. I really have to applaud you. You did a good job. So did Alan. You're bringing up the right questions. I hope the rest of you guys start doing it. Reddishpoon, I gave up on, you should retire.
Time's up, Stemka.
You should retire.
Time's up, Mr. Stemka.
What's that?
Time is up.
Well, I tried, Ed. Jim?
You did well. Thank you.
I got started. Do I got started? You got an hour?
So you've got five minutes next meeting.
I got one more question. One more thing.
No.
You got the foreigners coming in. 250. Shember says, "You'll take them all."
Mr. Stemka.
Taking them all.
Your five minutes are up. I'm sorry.
This is bull. I'm going to start carrying my gun. I...
Okay. Do we call security?
Call security.
Call security.
Call security.
We just had a threat here.
Over, that's so tight.
Yes, you said you're going to carry your guns.
Not here. Because that was outside.
You're out.
That was outside.
Any more citizens to be heard? Ms. Watson, we ready to move on?
Sure. Do it. Ordinance is for final passage. Council File Number 16248, Official Ordinance 532021. An ordinance appropriating the sum of $200,000 or $200 from appropriated and anticipated revenue from Value Home Center. Sponsored by Mrs. Schaff, seconded by Mrs. Allen. The Council File Ordinance Bill Number 16248, and now known as Official File Ordinance 532021, be finally passed by City Council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brzezinski. City Council pass Official File Ordinance 532021 by yea seven, nay zero. Ordinance for first reading, Council File Number 16250, introduced by Liz Allen. An ordinance amending Articles 2, 3, and 6 of the City of Erie zoning ordinance to incorporate language for short-term rentals. Sponsored by Ms. Allen, seconded by Mrs. Schaff. The Council File Ordinance Number 16250, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brzezinski. City Council read and adopt Council File Ordinance 16250 by yea seven, nay zero on first reading.
Ms. Allen, should we tell them what those changes were in case the public isn't aware?
I think, yeah, if you want to explain it, Ed, I think we can have Kathy Rosda.
It won't be owner occupied.
Yeah, we'll have Ed explain. That would be the best way. Sorry.
The ordinance would provide or would allow short-term rentals to occur within the City of Erie. It would allow short-term rentals to be in all areas of the City of Erie. The zoning, the R1 and the R1A would require some additional conditions. It's permitted as a special exception in those areas. But anyone seeking to do a short-term rental in the R1 or R1A would have to go to the zoning hearing board for approval as a special exception. The ordinance would take effect 60 days after final passage, which would allow property owners sufficient time, if they have a short-term rental, to ensure that they've applied for the appropriate license and also have the property inspected.
No owner occupied is pulled from it also?
The original draft required that the... any short-term rental in an R1 or R1A be owner occupied, which would mean that you would have to live in the property at least under the draft ordinance 180 days. That provision is removed.
I think that sums it up very well. Thank you, sir.
You bet.
This takes us to New Business.
Yes. Move the balance?
We have a move? We need a second to... Okay. Mr. Witherspoon, second it. Any separations?
Mr. President, number one in New Business, please.
Definitely. Okay. Any other separations?
Mr. President?
Number three.
Good point. Okay. One and three. Any others, folks? Okay.
Mr. President, I've been informed that there's a motion to table number three in New Business.
Nobody made that motion yet. I guess that motion will be made when we pull it up. We just want to make sure it would be discussed, right?
Right.
When we separate it?
Ed said we don't discuss on a motion to table.
Right. No discussion.
On a motion to table, there would need to be a motion, a second, and then a vote. There's no debate.
But we still need to separate it so we aren't like...
Correct.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Moving the balance of the agenda. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brzezinski.
Okay, number one. Mr. Brennan, you want to start on that?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President. I sponsored this resolution for the honorary street designation to recognize Mr. Hagan for all he's done for our community. We've heard a lot of that, just with some people that have spoken today, and I've gotten even emails, if you can believe it already, just kind of saying that's a good... You know, they're glad they're seeing this, even though I'm sure he's had many, many accommodations over the years, and this is just small, another kind of recognition for him. His contributions to our city are too numerous to name. I'm not even going to try... What he has done and is doing right now for our city has been truly transformational. You know, we talked about that we're transformational a lot, and I think what he's doing right now is really amazing, and I think we're going to hopefully see many, many new things come from those investments that are going to continue to help our city. The honorary street designation location is on West Sixth Street from Myrtle to Chestnut, and this is the street where Mr. Hagan grew up, in the house directly across from the Hagan History Center. In support of this proposal, I submitted two support documents to council members. One document was an email from Attorney Randy Shapiro, who authored a letter to council asking for this honor for Mr. Hagan. The second document was a bio I put together based on everything I've seen on the internet and newspapers for Mr. Hagan. I was able to actually speak to Mr. Hagan last Wednesday, when he invited the Historic Review Commission to tour several historic buildings that he is currently restoring on West Sixth Street. Amazing tour. We had to talk... Actually, got to talk to a resident there who was very happy with everything she was seeing, and she moved there. She feels safe. She sees the neighborhood improving, just like many people have said. So I think what's being done is driving people to the city, and will continue to do that. All the units that are coming available, the spaces become... are taken immediately. Although Mr. Shapiro had informed Mr. Hagan of his request to council a few weeks ago, it was my pleasure to let him know that this honor was being placed on today's agenda. So I hope all council members will join me in support of this resolution. I'm not going to spell out Mr. Shapiro's letter and mine, my bio. I just wanted to at least say those comments in support of this resolution that's on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brennan. I seconded that, and we want everybody to realize this is an intent resolution. But we want a little bit more than just a street sign for the accomplishments of Mr. Hagan. Mr. Brennan, I think, is going to talk to the Historical Preservation Society. Maybe we can make this a real classy thing. That'll be there for as many years as his buildings are. One great guy for one great city. Thank you. Call for a vote unless somebody else has something to say.
Resolution is that across the city officials with honor of the service and dedication of city.
Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. This takes us to number three.
Make the move to table right now? You have a second?
Motion to table number three, Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brzezinski. Motion to table passes, seven yea, nay zero. This takes us to committee reports.
Okay, committee reports. Leader to pack, Ms. Ellen.
Or Ellen, as some people just call me.
Ellen.
That's okay. I can be Ellen. I attended the New Americans Council Advisory Group by Zoom last week, and it was a good session because there was a focus on sharing information about resources, and there will be follow-up roundtables between GCAC and the Multicultural Resource Center. Now, obviously, you know, who's serving what, what's available. There was discussion about where can you get your GED, where can you improve your English language speaking skills. I thought it was a really good session to... Because there's so much need for communication, which kind of brings me to my next committee report. On Monday night, I went to the Jefferson Educational Society for its opening program on systemic racism, and the speakers at the presentation were Clayola Brown, who had been president of the AFL Randolph Institute and is now working with the AFL CIO, and DeWitt Walton, county councilman from Allegheny County. But it was the roundtable, very formal roundtable before the presentation, where we got to hear from both Ms. Brown and Councilman Walton, and Charles Mock, a couple of other people around the table, talked about the importance of communication. And this is so important, whether we're talking about broadband or getting information out about ARP funding. Charles Mock actually said we really need a coordinated effort to work on communication. Clayola Brown talked about some places she was familiar with where somebody... It was actually, it was some kind of program where, you know, the response was, "Go online to apply." She's a very funny woman. She had a great sense of humor, and I can't remember when she said, you know, talking to her grandmother or something about the last time she went online, it wasn't thinking about using a computer. So she talked about community groups where grandkids and young adults were teaching older people how to use Zoom, which we've all... We've all... We're all familiar with Zoom, and it just was a really cool chance to hear about grassroots efforts to improve communication. And in that regard, we had an interesting discussion. We couldn't talk about Roger Young Park because we voted to table it, but at the caucus, there was a lot of discussion about maybe council members not understanding the ARP process. So I went and looked. They laugh at me because I send them a lot of reports. I've started putting a read receipt on them, because I don't know if these reports are being read or not, but I found a report that I did to my council colleagues. ARP process so far started with August 4th, went down all the way through September 15th, in which I explained how we had created a committee, what was happening in terms of proposals being presented to the committee and then to council. I mentioned Roger Young Park in here, and I just want to read here what I had written. During our caucus on August 4th, Michael Key suggested that we form an ARP committee. He said he was following up on my suggestion that we create a committee, as county council did early on. We agreed informally that the committee would include Michael, Mel, and myself, because ARP decisions will be made over a two-year period. August 12th, Michael, Liz, Mel held informal committee meeting at Tim Hortons. Liz composed a summary of meeting at Tim Hortons, sends it to Mel and Michael. The email is appended below. My takeaway is on our meeting yesterday, we place a high priority on parks and recreation, especially for under-maintained parks on Erie's East Side, including Roger Young. We should look... This is what we talked about. We should look at ways to revive the Rails-to-Trails project that David Brennan and Jay Brenneman proposed years ago, which had the potential to truly transform the area around the basketball carts and possibly restore pedestrian access where the McBride Viaduct had been, maybe using some new infrastructure funding. After that report, which ends on September 15th, Kathy Schaff had been attending weekly briefings with the mayor and department heads on Tuesdays. Can I have a few more minutes to finish this, because it's really important?
Finish it, please.
So Kathy started teaching, and I started subbing. I don't know if I was the sub. We were going to rotate these weekly briefings, but I became the reporter for the Tuesday briefings. I developed a template where I would send out a report, a summary of those briefings, to council. There were several different categories I used. The first one was COVID, to let them know what the COVID numbers were. The second category was ARP. So every week, I was communicating with council what we knew about ARP funding. So communication is important. I'm good at it. I want to listen to everybody else. I think that there was a lack of communication on the Roger Young Park proposal, which is why I would have voted no if it had come up for a vote. But that doesn't mean that Roger Young does not need a lot of attention as a really major park on the East Side. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ellen. Mr. Brennan?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to report on two items. One was the Historic Review Commission meeting we had Monday. The first item on our agenda was the presentation of an initiative... The first item on our agenda was the presentation of an initiative called Shared Heritage by Melinda Meyer and Johnny Johnson. We talked about HRC's role in the process and also a letter of support. For anyone who wants to view their website, please do. It's www sharedheritage.org. The description on the website, they tried not to spend too much time on this, is, "A Shared Heritage invites you to discover key people, places, and events associated with the history of the African-Americans in Erie County, Pennsylvania, and learn how they contribute to the economic, political, and cultural broader story of the region." On the website, there's a map and descriptions of locations. African-American leaders' bios, including our Council Witherspoon on the website. They're planning to install 10 total interpretive panels right now, five or six to start, and they're seeking a grant to pay for, pay for them. We discussed the maintenance and the ownership of the panels, which will be discussed further, several options there. And we also brought in, since council does get various requests for historical markers, so we talked about possibly a process for that. So we had a, instead of kind of making it up as we go, I know we, councilman has alerted to several of those items. We want to place proper attention on them and, you know, treat them with the respect they need to be treated. Also, we, Chris Kinder started recently as Historic Preservation Planner. He's already working hard on various initiatives for the HRC. He recently put together a rough draft of bylaws and rules of procedure for the HRC, and the commission is viewing right now and will refine and finalize that. We also discussed the demolition delay ordinance. If any council members remember, I have supported that in the past. And I think we agree that we wanted to get a preservation plan in place to make sure we properly address that. So that is being addressed right now by the HRC. And then lastly, Parking Authority, no report, but our next meeting is November 9th. And Chris, Chris Friday and I have been discussing, getting together to talk about some parking ordinance change ideas he has. Nothing scheduled yet, but I'll keep council and administration informed. Thank you.
We talked about communication, and I'm not being negative on this, but I bet you the rest of the council would have loved to have been with Mr. Hagan, with you folks. Just to mention of Ms. Allen talking about communication.
Yeah, well, maybe we could, we, actually, I didn't really, we kind of knew ahead of time it was set up. But we had a group of people. We didn't want to go bring a lot of people through. But definitely, if we wanted to, we could talk to Mr. Hagan and see if that's possible.
See if anybody else is interested.
Sure, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Brennan. I'm sorry, I go to Ms. Schoff.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to congratulate all the winners yesterday. Mr. Winarsky, congratulations on your Erie County Council appointment coming up. And Liz Allen, the number one winner for city council. And I am so proud to know you. And I definitely think your leadership into the next four years is going to be awesome and amazing. And I am going to be cheering you on the whole way. So your leadership and communication is second to none. Congratulations to Chuck Nelson, who is here in the audience, which is awesome and amazing because this is what's needed. You need to get the info going into the next year. And congratulations to Mo Troop and Jasmine Flores as well. So I was disappointed that the Erie redevelopment wasn't on the agenda. I didn't know it wasn't going to, I mean, you know, I'm all for what you're doing. So thank you for stepping up to the plate, the people who spoke about it. And I love our west bayfront and the east bayfront task force as well. I'm in both neighborhoods, whether you know it or not. I did help with the trick-or-treating event on October 23rd or 22nd. And anytime you need a volunteer in either neighborhood, I would love to help you. So even though in the future I may be off council, make sure you keep my phone number. I'll give you my new email, whatever, because I love Erie. And especially the east-west bayfront connections, you know, absolutely wonderful. The, I think we should have, like, a historical something. Maybe we could have a little mini museum or something in that neighborhood of the Buffalo Road Homes. So many seniors especially that I have talked with had lived there growing up. And there's like such a history behind that. And I know when I go to some cities, they have like little places where you can go in and just get the flavor. And it doesn't have to be a real big place. So I think that would be awesome. My friends went to a place called Randi Land in Pittsburgh and sent me pictures. I want to go there. So Google it. I think that would be neat to have somebody do that in Erie as well. Repository sales, thank you. Liz and I, with Mr. Gamble, had walked the streets in the Holland area where there were some gardening areas that have not been taken care of. So we do need to address things like that to make sure that they are well-kept up. My phone was down for a week. It just completely died on me, and I got a new one today. So those people who were not communicating with me and you were wondering why I wasn't communicating with you, it's because of that issue. So it's going to be good to be up and running again. What else did I want to talk about? Chairman of the Finance Committee, I thank you all for the upcoming times that we're going to be meeting. This is always a time of the year that, yes, we have holidays, but yes, our duty to civic city. Oh, I know what I was going to say. Jason Belton, that passing just broke my heart. I often saw him out and about, talking with everyone. He would always say hi to me. Our police officers on the bike really take the time to get to know the people. And he will definitely greatly be missed. And if anyone thinks about it, and the PALS organization would be a good place to donate some money this holiday because those officers really go above and beyond. And, and with the kids, you know, this summer, I know a fella, a young man, oh, speak, so, okay. I'm meeting tomorrow, or no, Monday, with a young woman in high school at Seneca who wants to beautify with consistent planning that's going to come up years. She's going to be talking to me about beautifying, I don't know if it's one particular park or not. And I hear my buzzer. So, oh, civility code, civility code, that needs to be addressed. And we need to move this forward so the new people coming in will have something to follow. So if you have not contacted her, please do so. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Winarsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Want to thank the administration for the budget that was presented before us today. Like in the past, there's always some good news and some bad news. And unfortunately, they're talking about garbage and sewer increases, which I don't know how many people know. It's been a while since we've had those increases. But so, once again, we'll discuss those to see if there's any adjustments that can be made and go from there. Stormwater management, please, understand. I get it. I'm for it. It's just that fee part at this time. I mean, with the way inflation, gas prices, potential garbage increase, potential sewer rate increase, there's got to be something. I mean, we're getting an initial influx of 10.5 million over the two years to get the plan implemented. So just maybe we can plan on a fee maybe in two or three years down the road before, and give the citizens some type of warning. With the other potential increases in place and just with the economy as a whole, it just, I just don't feel it's the right time to add another fee onto that. But that's why we have budget sessions, and that's why we have a council of seven to discuss those with the administration. I'm sure we'll do our due diligence for all 85,000 residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Winarsky. Congratulations again. Good to get rid of you, actually. You know I'm teasing you. Mr. Witherspoon?
Thank you, Mr. President. Regarding Officer Jason, I have spoke to members of his family and I spoke to police chief. And he participated in our summer basketball league. And I presented a plaque and medal to him. And I got the permission from family to create an annual award in his name on behalf of the Summer Basketball League. And that would come out of my pocket, not City Hall. It's something I want to do. And the police department will determine which officer is presented that plaque each year. And it's just something that I wanted to do.
Thank you, Mr. Witherspoon.
Also, congratulations to the winners politically. Wish them all the best of luck, and we'll make sure we do the best we can. And especially to Councilman Winarsky. I will be attending county council meeting, and I'll be there to advise you when you get in trouble. I might be at a meeting. I'm still waiting to get a report from Mr. Pocani at Pennalec on the manhole covers that Pennalec owns. I've been in touch with AJ regarding the manhole covers we own, and he's working with engineering to get that. Time is running short, so we need to identify the worst manhole covers in the city so we can level it out with cold patch. And then next spring, we can attack them all, but we need to identify the worst ones. One was on West A Street near Pittsburgh Avenue. And I believe the city is taking care of that one. That ends my report, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Witherspoon. And we go to Mr. Keys.
Good afternoon.
It's afternoon already?
Is it? It's five o'clock somewhere. But anyways, I'd just like to say that, you know, with the city moniker of restoring hope and transforming our city, I would hope that they learn to look at it through a much broader lens than they look at it now. And while it's good to attend seminars on systemic racism and institutionalized racism, you have to look at how they become, and then you have to look at how they are institutionalized within our fabric. You know, one could say it's a matter of apples and oranges. Systemic racism could be something as easy as building parks on the west side and putting millions of dollars in them and saying no to that on the east side. That's my comment.
Thank you, Mr. Keys. Mr. Betzel?
I do not have anything.
Thank you very much. Therese? Congratulations, by the way. You really kicked butt, too.
Thank you. I have no report. There'll be a pension meeting, aggregate board meeting next week. So the next council meeting, I'll have information on how the funds did for the quarter.
Okay, thank you. I'll take a second here. First of all, congratulations to all the winners. I'd like to put an offer out there, Mr. Nelson, I'm sure you'll take it into consideration. When we set up these study sessions, you can get ahold of the clerk's office to find out when they are. The only caveat is that you have to listen. That's why you have two ears. You're not going to be making any decisions. You can talk to us after the meetings. But I think you'll get a wealth of knowledge. You already have a lot because you've been working hard on it, I know. But if we can get all the new council people there, we'll have a step up come January. That being said, I again thank Mr. Witherspoon for the Jason Belton Award. I knew his dad as he started at prep. His mom and my mom worked at the cafeteria together. No father or mother should ever, ever have to bury a son or a daughter. And I can't even, that's it. Renee?
Good morning, everyone. I share in mourning Officer Belton. It's a real loss for the police department. He was, you know, it was just a month ago that Mr. Witherspoon presented him with his plaque and medal. And he really was an exemplary police officer for the city, but also a valued and beloved member of the community and of the downtown for all the work that he did. And so that's, that's a great loss for us all. And, you know, our hearts go out to his family and friends and to his brothers and sisters in the Erie Police Department.
Okay, Renee, you're done. Mayor already talked. I got to get us smiling. Okay, go ahead.
So on the, just a few things on the stormwater fee. You know, we're hoping that we can see that back on the agenda for an up or down vote. If there are additional questions, we'll be happy to address those. You know, again, the fee for residential homeowners, it would be 12, 24, or $36 a year. And then the fees for nonprofits and businesses would be based on their square footage of impervious surface. The billing unit would be based on 2,136 square feet, and it'd be $24 per 2,136 square feet. We, the reason why it's time-sensitive is because we need to work with the consultant to get the billing ready. The fee would appear on the property tax bills and would be in with the property tax bills. But that fee would go into a separate account that would all be used for the management of our stormwater system and to get us in compliance with our MS4 permit. This is actually very important because we're not currently in compliance, and we have a lot of pollutant, pollutants entering our, our bay, lake, and creeks and streams, and we need to get that under control. In terms of American Rescue Plan funding, we hope we can also get back on track, get the Redevelopment Authority's Comprehensive Housing Plan on the agenda for November 17th. We also don't want to lose, we don't want to, we want to stay on track with our proposal for the Department of Economic and Community Development for those programs. We have a lot of grants and loans that we're proposing to help businesses within the city of Erie. We have a lot of them reaching out to us that need help. We just had the, we just opened our round of flagship fund, which just closed October 29th. And we've had, we've seen more applications than we've ever received in the past and more minority applications than we've ever received in the past. So these business owners are really hurting and need that funding. So we hope to have a study session with you in, within a week or two so that we can present that to you fully. So you can ask any questions. We'll be happy to answer those. We also, as I mentioned previously, have been meeting regarding homelessness, mental health issues, drug and alcohol addiction, domestic violence, and juvenile crime, which have all seen an increase during COVID. We've been meeting with our, our community partners and have a proposal that we'd like to bring to you on that. And then finally, before the end of the year, And then finally, before the end of the year, the Planning Department would like to bring their proposal for a participatory budgeting process to empower residents to share with us what kinds of improvements they would like to see in the parks within our qualified census tracts. There are about 25 parks there, and we really want to get resident input and let them prioritize the improvements that they want to make. So there will definitely be improvements to Roger Young. We just want to give residents an opportunity to share with us in an open process what they would like to see. Finally, two things. I want to let you know that our, we have a diversity, equity, and inclusion consultant that we've hired that will be starting after the first of the year to look at our policies and our programs and initiatives, and to share best practices with us from other communities so we can make sure that we are being as inclusive as possible. And I want to remind everyone how important it is to get vaccinated. Right now, the numbers are much higher than they were last year at this time, and we just want to keep everybody safe, so please go out and get vaccinated if you haven't already. That's all, thanks.
Clarification. Earlier this year, I, Lori, we decided we advertised for Tuesday sessions if needed, so we could use those Tuesdays as well as Thursdays for possible study sessions?
For budget.
For budget?
Would be anything.
Yeah. I think we have it advertised, I think it's going to be legal. That's why I'm asking the boss over there.
All of your, they're all meetings, they're all advertised, they're all open to the public. You can do at them what you need to.
Super, thank you.
Mr. President, can I ask Renee a question?
Sure.
Renee, we know that the administration has been meeting with Bruce Katz from the Brookings Institution, the author of The New Localism, to talk about how to maximize the impact of ARP funding, and David Brennan and I reached out to see if city council could also be brought into that conversation, so I just wanted to remind council that we all got an email from Mary Tredway asking when we would be available. There were some suggested dates and times when we could do that, and I think it would be really good because I think that would help put us on the same page as the administration in terms of the, how to have the big impact with the ARP funding. So I know, I responded, I think I'm available just about any time, I think David did, but if everybody else could respond so we could agree on when that would be, I think it would be really helpful, so. And I thank, you know, Bruce Katz and his assistant, Mary Tredway, for responding like almost immediately when the request went out.
Thanks for bringing that up. He's been a huge help. He, you know, of course, has a lot of connections in Washington, D.C., and knows a lot about the recovery funding that's going to be coming down from the federal government in terms of infrastructure and the additional, the additional funding. And so really what he's helping us to do is prioritize our needs so that we can go out and leverage what we've received, it's about $76 million, and to go out and get matching dollars through the federal government and also through the Commonwealth, so that we can really have much larger impact than we could just with our $76 million alone. So we're taking full advantage of that. He tells us that we are much farther along than other communities because of all the planning that we've done in these first four years, and so we look forward to taking full advantage of that as soon as the funding is ready.
Super. One last comment, an announcement. Ms. Schoff told me that she's going to take a two-year break, and then she's going to come and run, I don't know, with me or against me, because I don't know if I'm running, but she says she's coming back. Thank you, Ms. Schoff.
Mr. President?
Yes, Ms. Wetherspoon.
I'd like to ask Renee on the, next year, I guess when your consultant comes in and establish meeting dates, I would love to be included. Thank you.
I'll say.
If you have our bio, could you send it to council?
That being said, I think I have everybody covered. Say goodnight.
City council adjourns at 11:08 a.m. Mr. Brzinski, Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Ms. Schoff, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Wetherspoon.